I'll call the December 14th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:31 PM. We'll all stand. Indication tonight will be by Trey Lund, who's with Golden Rule Youth and Young Adult Leadership.
Before we start, I think they have a little celebration planned.
We do. We like everyone. It's a big day, we understand, for our superintendent, so we can brought a little Christmas cheer and a birthday cake to honor him. So will you all join me in saying happy birthday to our superintendent?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Mr. Wilson. Happy birthday to you.
Do you think you can clear your hat?
And we as a board have a little gift for them, too.
Thank you all. I appreciate it all. You shouldn't have, but I do appreciate it. And a little pop flavor.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Trey Lund, and I'm a senior at Pickens High School and also the president of FCA. And I'm here with the Golden Rule Youth Leadership and Young Adult Association, and we are here to try to spread the word of God in our community and continue to spread His word throughout. I'd also like to give a very special thank you to Ms. Patty Bernard for nominating me to be one of the part of this wonderful program. And I'd like to turn it over to Matt Bearden, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Bearden. I'm the lead delegate for the Golden Rule Youth and Young Adult for the 2018 year. And we just come tonight, and we're thankful to be here, first of all, and happy birthday to you, Mr. Wilson. And what our organization is, is a group of youth and young adults that are working to exemplify Christ. And we want to bring Christ everywhere we go. We want to exemplify what He stood for and the doctrine thereof. And I have some of the delegates with me here tonight. I have Cole Moore right here, and I have John Paul Fax, I have Jill Bowling, and I have Reese Melvin, and I also have Trey Lund. And it's just a few of us to represent. There's more of us, but these are just the, these are some of the high schoolers that are with me, and graduates. And I'm also an alumni, so here I am. But our organization just says, you know, thank you for having us. And we are wanting to start something called the Golden Rule Watch. And what that is, is we're wanting to start basically a program where if you see someone doing an act of kindness or exemplifying Christ-like ideals, someone doing something as simple as opening a door for someone, or for instance, there was a soldier that saluted a passerby for a funeral, saluted the hearse, and just acts like that, you know, things that, you know, warm your heart. But just again to say thank you, and if now Trey will join me, he's going to lead us in prayer.
I don't know if I remember that. Please by your heads. Personally, Father, I thank you for having us together here tonight. Father, I pray that as we go throughout this evening, you will guide your hands to our wonderful board members. And Father, I pray that as we own to this time of celebrating your son's birthday, that we will just continue to spread the joy and love that he so wonderfully embodied. Father, I just thank you for many blessings you give us each and every day. And your son's name, I pray. Amen.
First item, leave the approval of the agenda. Do you hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Motion by Ms. Lewis, second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, motion carries. Next item will be spotlight on student achievement. We have the ETC Spelling Bee winner.
Thank you and good evening. On Saturday, November the 11th, approximately 50 5th graders throughout the entire North Georgia area traveled to Fannin County High School Performing Arts Center to compete in the annual ETC Spelling Bee. I am excited to announce the winner of the Spelling Bee is from Pickens County in Harmony Elementary School, Ms. Emma Christensen. Emma is a wonderful student, very active in the school. In addition to participating in the reading bowl, she's, the Spelling Bee, she's also on the reading bowl team, social studies fair competitor, and a member of our Helping Hands Committee. Overall, she's an excellent student. She worked very hard preparing with Ms. Anderson, who couldn't be here tonight, one of her teachers, and with her father Doug, who is here. In addition to the Spelling Bee champion title and trophy, she won $500 and $2,000 for the school. And in spending the $2,000 for school, I consulted with Emma, and we're going to create a student workroom as well as invest in our technology lab. So please help me congratulate Emma Christensen.
Thank you.
That is so wonderful. Could our kids take a picture with you two since you're there? Could we do that? Are you, are you the young adult? Come on up, all of you. Let's go get a picture with our wonderful hosts.
Thank you so much.
I think the Spelling Bee recipient needs to be right in the middle.
Okay. Okay, next will be the superintendent reports.
I'd like to say that next month, I'd like to send a little presentation of what it really means to be a lighthouse school to watch. But we were officially notified the other day that Pickens County Middle School obtained that certification again as a lighthouse school to watch. And you'll, we'll get some details on what that involves at our next meeting. But congratulations to Pickens County Middle School. Ms. Amy.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. You know, this time of year, you would think things would slow down just a little bit, but they don't. I'm happy to announce that Amanda Probst, our bookkeeper, gave birth to a bouncing baby boy the day before we got out for Thanksgiving break. Mr. Hudson arrived, weighing about seven and a half pounds, and is healthy. Mom's doing great. And we miss her very, very much, but understand why she's out with, with her beautiful son, and look forward to when she comes back to us. But in the meantime, we have been collecting quite a bit of tax money. Of course, property taxes were due the first week of December. At the time that we did this report, we had collected 46.53% of our budgeted revenue, so we're close to 50%. So that's good at this point. We do expect quite a bit more money to come in over the next few weeks. The county has a two-week turnaround time. Once they receive the money, they have two weeks to get it to us by state law or state reg. So they are working diligently to make sure we have that money. Overall, we've collected 38.18% of our budgeted revenue, and everything is right on target at this point. Our expenditures, we've expended just shy of 30% of our budgeted expenditures at 29.94%. Do y'all have any questions on this report? Kind of normal, everyday stuff going on right now. Our next report is the SPOS stub date. For the month of November, we received $389,153.98 in SPOS revenue, collected interest of $1,759.14. As you see, we had a couple of expenditures for the month. Of course, this is still SPOS four money that we're writing checks on. One was for installation of some fencing, and that's over at the North Star area on the JES campus. And then we did buy some equipment and furniture for the food service department. At the end of November, our balance was $8,916,879.62. And then our final report is just to show you, we've had 10 months of collections. I don't know if you remember, at the end of SPOS four, our collections were running around $340,000. So we have taken quite a jump on that average. The past 10 months, we're just a shade over $375,000. So that's always good news, and we'll always put it to good use. Do y'all have any questions?
We'll let Martha pull up the dropout report. We had three dropouts to report for the month of November, which brings our total to seven. Board members, do you have any questions regarding that report? For the high staff attendance for the month of November, I'd like to congratulate Tate Elementary School, Ms. Stephanie Hall. If you'll come get your certificate. Wow, we're seeing a pattern here forming. Okay, and now if we can look at the student enrollment and attendance information. Congratulations to Jasper Elementary School, Dr. David Wiles. And Corey, you'll bring the banner. 96.05%. You want to get this after you have your picture ready? As the other principals will tell you, Dr. Wiles, this is not a permanent fixture Congratulations to Jasper Elementary. Thank you. And I would like to say, on behalf of the Student Services Department, we do appreciate you, board members, superintendent, Mr. Landrell, for your commitment, for your encouragement, especially for all your blessings about our school system. So as a little token of our appreciation, we left you a little, some little mints. So thank you again, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Operation Construction, Mr. Stacy.
This time last week, we were talking about snow. Can you believe it? Hope it's not a sign of what's coming the rest of the year. I would like to thank the maintenance and transportation staff for the extra effort during the recent snow. Especially, I wanted to thank David Chapman, Jacob Tinsley, Tracy Alday, Joel Collis, and Shane Chadwick for the extra time spent on the Saturday and Sunday getting the building, the sidewalks, parking lots and things, ready in case we could have come Monday. But it still had to be done. But I appreciate them putting in extra effort. Transportation, we'll be having our Christmas party on December the 19th at noon. You are welcome to come. Please drop by. It's just finger foods and fellowship with everyone. We have three individuals from our last training class that will be CDL tested in December, on December 20th. And one of those getting that is Michelle Bracken with Boys and Girls Club. So she's going to be a, she said a sub to a sub, that she would help us if we needed to help sometimes. So we're proud that she came on and did that. It's good. She's been, she's been great to work with. This turned out to be a pretty good partnership right there. Proud of it. Our next class, training class, will be January the 26th to the 22nd to the 26th. And sharing one wish, all y'all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And come by the 19th and visit for a few minutes. SRO report. At the high school, one frey, one disorderly conduct, one possession of alcohol by a minor, and one public indecency. JMS, one aggravated battery. I had five citations issued for parent responsibility. And they taught 28 classes of CHAMPs in 5th grade to 5th grade students, which is, that's a great program. It's, I hope the kids enjoyed as much as it is beneficial to them. Food service didn't have a report, Bethel. It's just normal, everyday stuff right now. But we'll bring you something next month. Later in the, in the meeting, on an action item, I'm going to be asking, and I've asked Dr. Wilson to recommend this, and he's got it on the board agenda. We had the hail damage back about four months ago, five months ago, that did a lot of damage. We had to, we earned money to replace the covering on the, on the greenhouse at Jasper Middle School. We got money to replace the band concession building, all their equipment, refrigerator, bunch of stuff there. We got some money back for that, which we've already used insurance money to replace that stuff and pay for it. We also earned some money off that storm that was for hail damage, and it was at Hill City. We had 38 units damaged there. And we had this boardroom, good reason we're cold tonight. We're going to be replacing these units because of the hail damage. They're just, they're old. And if we can repair them for what the money, what money that we earned through the insurance, we can repair them. But you still got 15, 20-year-old units that are old. So, I mean, I'm asking tonight that we supplement this. And the total cost of this HVAC work is $332,000, $332,489. We will actually be buying $224,000 and $400 worth of equipment, just the equipment. So I'm asking, with the monies we've already spent with the greenhouse and the band and the track equipment, they actually blew away the pole vault pit and the pads and all that. So we're getting all new pads and all new stuff down there, too, out of this. And all that's already been applied for, and they've sent us a check. We actually have gotten a check from the insurance company for $260,809.28. That's how much we received for all this. So I'm asking for an additional, from SPOS, $150,000 to cover the additional cost for the new equipment. And that's a little bit more than it will take, but I wanted to ask for a little more in case of an uh-oh during the project. And I actually did negotiate with the insurance company. They gave us an extra $23,000 to put hail guards on this equipment this time to protect it from the hail damage. They didn't want to. I said, well, okay, I'm going to bring you another $200,000 claim here if we don't put the hail guards on. And so they agreed. They, she sent it straight over. She said, yeah, we're going to do that. So I'm asking that later on, Dr. Wilson will have it in the action item for an extra $150,000 to cover these expenses from SPOS. Anything on that?
Thank you, Stacy. Mr. Chairman? All right, that'll get us into the action items. First thing will be the approval of the funds to repair the HVAC systems that were damaged due to hail. Do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve the additional funds to replace the air conditioning.
Motion by Mr. Long. Your second?
I'll second.
Your second? Second by Ms. White. Any discussion? All those in favor? Next will be the approval of the 2018 Regular Board Meeting schedule. Who wants to speak on that?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you have our proposed schedule for next year. It will remain on the second Thursday of each night. The small difference being that we will start at 6 o'clock, but we'll start with an executive session, and then the regular portion of the board meeting will still continue to begin at 6:30, just to try to, not to have people having to wait during executive session.
Sounds good. Should get us out of here quicker. It's a cold weather. Don't get us out of here quicker. Like this is sort of a...
I think the back row back there has all raised their hand and...
Yeah.
They already said it.
Okay, does I have a motion to approve the 2018 Regular Board Meeting schedule as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the Regular Board of Education Meeting Schedule as presented.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, second by?
I'll second.
Ms. Pinnley? Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Unopposed? Motion carries.
I need to see my first hand back there.
Next will be approval of the minutes from the November 9th Regular and the December 12th Call Meetings. I will make that motion to approve those.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Next will be policy revisions. If you want to speak on that, there...
I would like to, my recommendation is to accept the policy revisions that we have gone through with Harbin and Hartley through the entire manual, with some revisions, and have it lay on the table until our next meeting in January, at which time we'll be asking for approval.
If anybody would like to have some light reading, that's what it looks like. Welcome to the reading.
Absolutely.
I'm sure everybody is almost all through with it.
Yes, absolutely. I'll make the motion to approve, delay the adoption of the policy revisions on the table for public review until our next Regular Board Meeting. Second? Second by Mr. Long. Any discussion?
Our public, anybody that does want to comment on any of our policies, just contact Martha at the county office, either by phone or through email, to give your opinion.
Are the revised, are these revisions on the website? Or where do they need to come to to see them?
Tomorrow, then, we'll leave.
Okay.
Yeah, after y'all.
Okay, okay.
All of those in favor?
I haven't finished reading it yet, so...
Next, Source for Teachers.
I would like to ask the board's approval for the contract to approve an enter into agreement with Source for Teachers LLC, doing business with ESS, Source for Teachers, which is a outsourcing of our subs that would also aid our schools and our principals and our personnel in obtaining subs automated and through an owner, a person that works with the company there. But it will free up a lot of our early morning secretaries and teachers from having to find their own sub.
I see a lot of principals waving their hands. Big smiles.
Probably won't be any of them raise their hand and objection on that either.
And if we have anybody in our audience that would like to be a sub, they are recruiting. They do pay benefits, and you can work more than 29 hours.
Yep, with benefits.
With benefits.
They just have to work five days, four days, per month, to have benefits.
Do I hear a motion to approve that agreement?
I make a motion to approve our agreement with Source for Teachers.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Your second? Second. Mr. Long, any discussion?
I just would like to say, we did see a pretty extensive presentation by this group, and they will do extensive training before they are actually going to take, take this project on board. And I think that this is going to give a lot of freedom to our, whoever it is in each school that's responsible for trying to find substitutes, especially those late morning calls that you get, or teachers who are trying to call 50 names while they're not feeling so hot to start with. So we hope that this will be a big help, and we would appreciate your feedback as we implement this.
If anybody wants to sign up, one of our representatives is here. Take it easy.
My memory's terrible. Does anybody else remember kind of the timeline of when this is going to?
Yeah, this is...
We're looking at February 15th or February 24th start date. But we're going to have to get with finance on that to make sure we're able to build the bridge between our technology and your payroll processing and all of that.
But as soon as we can.
Yes, as soon as possible.
I can imagine anybody not being excited about trying.
Yeah, it's impressive.
And this, by the way, is our representative who's over here. So any of the principals who want to ask her any questions, I'm sure she will be willing to answer those for you.
If she wasn't, she probably is now.
Ms. Lehman told me that she called numerous references and did not receive one negative comment. All the schools were very enthusiastic about it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Next item, I will make a move that would go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action or dismissal upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, and to consult and meet with counsel, legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Your second? Second. Second by Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, motion carries.
Maybe that'll, that's, I'll go to bed for that, just so I can say I fell asleep too. I'm like, yeah, you were boring. You probably have a good soothing nighttime voice. You're not even sweating, you were supposed to sit up here.
I didn't mess up, it's not running, is it?
Yeah, it is.
I'm sorry.
No, it didn't matter. No, no, I won't start until they start. I won't edit it, but it's fine. What's over here?
Okay, 7:41 PM, a motion was made by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Finley, to come out of executive session. No action was taken. I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
I make a motion that we approve the executive session as read. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, seconded by Ms. Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five unopposed, motion carries. Next item will be approval of personnel. I hear a motion to approve Personnel Action Report as presented.
I make a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented.
Ms. White, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed, motion carries. Next is board comments. Is everybody here that's left? Merry Christmas to everybody, I hope everybody has a good new year. Thanks for everything you do, appreciate it.
And I would like to say, even though the audience is a little fed, I appreciate Dr. Wilson taking the time and energy to do the public comments sessions that are scheduled for next week, and speak to the faculties and other staff folks this week about some pretty big decisions that we've got coming up. And those of you who are in contact with people, please encourage them to come forward and either email us or present their ideas to us in those meetings. I think that we're getting some very good feedback, and hopefully we will make better decisions as a result of that.
I'd just like to say that, Stacy, you probably would have approved the HVAC study. You didn't have to turn it off in here tonight.
The air is working great.
We know, we know, we know everybody in this room will agree with that one, but you didn't have to turn it off, we probably would have approved that anyway.
I apologize, I didn't know it was going to be this.
Well, it's been warm.
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Wilson, Stacy, and all of their staff too, for making the decisions they make during the snowstorms and keeping our staff and students safe, because I know some other counties did not have the same success that we did and ran into some problems and issues getting their students home. So I just wanted to show appreciation to you guys for riding the roads and checking and keeping our kids and teachers and all of our staff safe. Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and thanks for all that you do.
Next item is to adjourn.
I'd be glad to make the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Long, seconded by...
Ms. Lewis.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, motion carries or adjourn?